Hey, it's 6:45 and we'll call this virtual meeting to order. And we're at virtual right now for the higher transparency that we can share the screens and that is in the recording of the meeting. So we will go to our pledge of allegiance. If you want to rise to the pledge of allegiance and Scott will play the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag.
of the United States of America
States of America.
and to the republic for which it stands. one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty
and justice for all.
Perfect. Thank you. And Secretary Slager, if we could have a roll call, please? We can't hear you, Tracy. Can anyone else hear us? Is this me?
No.
Nope. Right there? No volume. Okay, Kate, you can hear us, so? Okay, all right. So I'll go ahead and call the roll for you since I have audio. Vice President Schaffner?
Here.
Secretary Slager is nodding. Treasurer Gilmore?
Here.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Here.
Trustee Revard?
Here.
Trustee Bowser?
Here.
President Reed, here. We have all the board present and we do have established a quorum. So we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda and I would entertain a motion.
So moved?
Support?
Any discussion? Thank you. Having no discussion. Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager? Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Revard?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes. The agenda is adopted as presented and that brings us to gratitude. I would entertain a gratitude. Anybody that wants to share?
Sure, I'll start. How can we not be grateful? School is back in session. Yay! I'm very grateful for just all of your guys' hard work. Administration, teachers, staff, students, everybody. It's just been amazing to see and to have stories come home with my own kids. So appreciate all the efforts.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm thankful for the I'm thankful for the parents and that have come alongside the students that are learning from home. I know it's a learning curve for folks on a computer and I know it's challenging. We're living it at my house too, but the teachers have been very patient and they've been doing a great job. And so I know it's challenging for everybody right now, but the can-do attitude that allows us to be able to move forward and be able to continue to educate the kids at home. Truly amazing. So thank you for the parents and teachers out there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I too am thankful just for the tremendous effort that went into this, the launch of this school year. From an operational perspective, from a student services perspective, from a curriculum perspective, from a human services perspective, from a business and finance perspective, it really, it was an incredible lift. And I had gotten zero calls so far from people who have been frustrated. So we're five days in. No calls. Let's see if we can keep the train on the tracks.
Mr. Revard, did we miss you?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm grateful for that staff that you've put together, Scott. I watched your video that you sent out for all the staff and I watched your bloopers reel. And it's very clear that it's a group of people who have a common goal. They're very excited about what they do. And the leadership that we needed to get through this has been in place and is in place in Cedar Springs. And I'm grateful for that.
I agree. To see and hear, you know, the different stories of the connections and the moms sitting in the hallway listening to their littles, doing their Zoom classroom thing and just the kids that are face-to-face. It's, everybody's just so grateful to be back and working together. So I'm grateful for all of that and everything. Okay. All right. We'll move on to, we have with us, which we haven't seen in a long time, so this is exciting too, our high school representatives and we have Madison and Cecilia with us. And they're going to share with us some of their student council plans. So I will turn it over to you girls.
Do you want to play the PowerPoint?
Sure. So do you want to do an audio like background? No? All right. Well, here is a little PowerPoint presentation that the student council members put together for us. All right.
Okay, that's quite a planning crew there. So do you girls want to tell us what you're going to start off with for this year? Or what are you thinking in this COVID-19 world?
Yeah. So right now we are working on Powder Puff. We wanted to keep that as, because I know that's a big thing for the juniors and seniors. We wanted to try to keep that as constant as we can. We are adjusting some of the rules to fit with the governor's orders. But we are trying to have that, we have the sign-ups sent out for the girls to sign up for that and the coaches. So that is underway. And then I don't know, Madison, if you want to talk about homecoming at all?
So we were told that we weren't going to be able to have a homecoming dance this year. But we still want to try and do something for the week of homecoming. Because usually, homecoming week is a big spirit week for the high school. You know, we have different spirit days and competitions and whatnot. So we want to keep that homecoming spirit alive. I don't think we're entirely sure how we're going to do that yet. But we've been working on coming up with ideas for that. So looking forward to homecoming week.
Hey.
I guess any questions?
Nope.
Sure. How was your guys' first week of school? Are you online or are you in the building?
I'm in the building.
Me too.
That's good.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you for being with us and sharing. And keep planning, keep planning fun. We need to find that fun. Even with the things we can't do for homecoming. So I'm sure you'll be right on that. So we'll see you next month.
Yes.
All right. You can stay with us or you may travel on to other school journeys.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We are going to move on. Okay, we're going to move on then with our agenda to our consent items. And I will entertain a motion.
So moved?
Support.
Okay. Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager? Having technical difficulties? Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Revard?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, the consent items are approved as presented. And that brings us to the discussion portion of our meeting. And first up, we have our financial update with Chris Lahey.
All right, thank you so much. Let me just switch the screen over real quick here. So pretty brief financial update for this evening's board meeting from me. You received your year-to-date budget update that just shows our first two months of the 2021 fiscal year complete. So if you have questions on anything there, feel free to reach out to me. That's through August 31st, obviously. Our 2019-2020 financial audit update. So last we spoke, they were just starting our audit in August. I'm sorry, the last regular board meeting, they were just starting. And I thought it was worth mentioning that Cedar Springs was the first district with a single audit, which is greater than $750,000 in federal funds to submit to the Michigan Department of Ed. So kind of neat. We're number one. All I won was, for the trouble, was a question from MPE about some COVID relief funds. It was better than nothing, I suppose. One thing I did want to share on here was a preliminary enrollment update. So this is as of last Thursday. I put our fall of 2019 totals from our fall count last October, where we came in at 3,580 students. And then you can see in the middle here is our fall 2020 IP that's in-person. Fall 2020 Red Hawk Online and then on the far right, our total. So right now, we're trending down a little bit from where we were last fall. But speaking with Chrissy here in District Office, who does our registrar work, we've got about 15 students or so that are still on the list that we're trying to get documents from to get them enrolled. Hopefully that number will move up a little bit, but staying relatively steady, which is a good thing. And at the work session, I'll go into a little bit regarding the super blend that they're going to use for account this year. I won't explain that right now. But that kind of helps us with that in this uncertain times. So any questions about enrollment or where those numbers are coming in? I'll stop for a minute.
I think, I think we, did we reach out to every family to determine what type of classes their student would take? And do we have an idea what, where that number went down at? People just went away? Did people move out of town? If we contacted everybody, we should have some data behind that number.
Yeah, I mean, we do have, and I can't speak to that myself exactly. But I do know that we do have some families that have chosen to homeschool and have said they're going to come back, but they're choosing to homeschool for this year. I've seen some of those emails myself. I don't have a count. But Matt Blood and I were just talking today that our kindergarten, kindergarten, excuse me, came in a little bit lower than what we expected. And we're hoping that we can still reach out and grab some of those families. So we'll see, but I'm not exactly sure, no, where some of them went. I know there was a push from the online schools. And obviously, we offered our own, so we caught a lot of those. But I think time will tell and I think just with the uncertainty, it's kind of to be expected to a certain extent. And, you know, with time, I think we can capture a lot of those Cedar Springs families back. So I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything from District Office on that front that I didn't touch on. But yeah, that's what I'm aware of.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that as you're analyzing the data, to not go straight across on the chart.
Yeah.
So when you look at the first graders in 2019, you need to look at the, if that group as second graders in 2020.
Right.
That we went from 230 first graders in 2019 to 217 this year. We went from 279 second graders to 269 right now. 236 in third grade to 231. And so it's not as, if you look straight across, it looks significant in terms of some drops. But if you look at the cohorting, you'll see a better analytical view.
Yeah, that's a really great point, Scott. And one thing along those same lines is that the kindergarten numbers include pre-K. So for example, last year, we had 40 pre-K students that are now still in the kindergarten. I mean, it's, obviously, the numbers are still down there. But they wouldn't have moved on. So of that 315 in kindergarten last year, 40 of them wouldn't have moved to first grade. So that number, you know, if they all would have went on to first grade, of the kindergarten students would have been at 275 and it's at 256.
And there was a significant, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
There was a significant decrease in the demand for preschool programming across the state. So GSRP had to make significant reductions in Kent County in terms of the number of sections that they offered. Our pre-K numbers, last year, we were at 40. We had two classes of 20 students in each class. This year, we've got, currently, we have one section at 12 and another section at 10. You know, so we're, those numbers will grow over the course of the year. But to Chris's point, we are really seeing some shifts in a downward direction for some of that non-essential, important, very important, but non-essential grade level programming. And so I think it just, it reflects a shift in some thinking for parents with preschool in some of those opportunities that are out there.
Yeah, and at our work session, I will discuss as well, a little teaser for everyone, about how the state is going to do our count, our count this year, where we'll be able to use last year's count quite significantly. And I think that's the state of Michigan's way of really kind of holding districts harmless. And you guys may have already seen that information, but I'll go through that as well. So.
You know, and I don't want to go line by line, but we picked up 37 seniors who were juniors last year. Is that, that's correct? 37 new seniors have come to our school this year.
Yeah, so these are the numbers that are enrolled in Power School currently. And so when I prepared this, Jeff, I went off the, you know, last year's fall count, certified fall count. And yeah, and so, I mean, they can change, but right now, this is who we have enrolled. Yep, and I'll continue to provide updates, you know, with the next few board meetings of our enrollments.
Do you want to add something, Jen?
Just that the offering of an online program for the high school was attractive to many students who may not be inclined to come in person. And so that may be one of the reasons that we picked up some online seniors who may have otherwise not finished high school.
Yeah.
Great way to look at it.
Thanks, Jen. Lastly, boy, this used to be a lot more exciting there, the investment summary. You know, I'm still trying, I'm still moving cash flow as much as possible. You know, the interest return is not what it once was. I say it every month, but we're still doing it. You notice with debt service funds, with our summer tax levy, that's going to really start to build up. So you'll start to see more than a dollar increase per month there. But we're going to keep investing, we're going to keep, you know, playing the cash flow game and trying to earn as much as we can on behalf of our students here. So that's what I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, Chris, for the scoreboard kind of that you've created here so we know what we're expecting each time. And your enthusiasm and being the first in for the audit. For me, it's, you're ahead of the game. And if we have to shift, if it's a COVID shift, you know, that allows you on that flexibility. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. And a little just quick comment too, I'll piggyback on that. You know, I have a couple of friends that are over in the Ottawa, Muskegon area and their districts are not doing as well. And I just really have an appreciation for how we've handled our finances and you're a big part of that, Chris, and team. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. It's a, it's a pleasure to be a part of it. Obviously, you know, I've only been here a short or a long six months. But, you know, it's part of the reason why this was such an attractive place to be. Because, you know, I mean, there's a multitude of reasons, but it's been handled well lately. So thank you and it's a pleasure to keep it going.
We've all grown old together in that six months.
Yeah. I think that accounts for like six years.
Yeah. For sure.
Yeah, Holly Haywood said to me the other day, "You've only been here six months." It feels like years. I don't know whether to take that as a compliment or not, so. I know how Ken Simon feels, but anyways, I beg your pardon. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to our discussion item B, Neola Policy Update with Mr. Smith presenting.
Yeah, thank you, Heidi. So this is a second look at three policy updates. The language as presented from Neola really just aligns our policy language with some adjustments and changes that have come legislatively. And this is our second read. And so we'll be looking for approval this evening if there are no significant questions or need for additional clarification.
So based on everybody's head nodding yes, these are pretty procedural changes. I will plan to call it as one action vote unless there's any further discussion now. If anyone has an issue with that. Okay. All right, perfect. All right, we will move on then to our extended COVID-19 learning plan that was, we've been blessed by the state legislature to have to provide. So Jen, take it away.
Absolutely. I'm going to share my screen here for a really short presentation. Stacy had hoped to join, but she had to step away for a bit of a situation at home. So she said, "Jen, just go." So as you know, the state asked us to put together a series of plans that we've been working on since late May. These most recent ones, the Extended COVID Learning Plan, are really three things. You might hear them called three different things. Well, four different things, I guess, because Extended COVID Learning Plan, it's a combination of the House bills that were passed a number of weeks ago, also called the Return to Learn Bills, that package, or Public Act 149, Section 98A. So any of those will suffice. We're calling it our Extended COVID Learning Plan. And hopefully, it will be the last plan that we have to do for COVID. But it asks us to make some assurances about transparency, educational goals, benchmark assessments, instructional delivery, equitable access and attendance. And thankfully, we had already done most of that work back in May and June and July. So it was really just putting it together in the template that was provided to us. This is in, I would say, maybe an extension of our COVID Preparedness and Response Plan, which was approved earlier. And that one was mostly about safety, health and mental health. This new one is more about ensuring that students are attending to the learning and that we've streamlined it in a way that we can get everything done in a school year, even if we have to go remote. So it's really nothing new from what you've already seen. It lines up with our Learning Acceleration Teamwork, our Flight Plan Goals, our MTSS work, our Continuous Improvement work that we will be asked to do this year, and then three different special education laws that we want to be mindful of. So IDEA, MARS and ADA. So what does it mean? It means that very soon, the document that was shared in Board Book needs to be posted on the website for everyone to see on our transparency link. We will be doing progress monitoring and reporting monthly. And that will happen at a board meeting. And really, it's going to ask us to report on our educational goals. And there's a link here that I'll share just so that you can see that. With the help of our friends at iReady and our countywide partners, we wrote our goals both middle of the year and end of the year so that we have a way to check in to make sure that we're on track. And you will see this at the beginning of the year. Shortly mid-October, we'll have our reading and math scores broken down by a variety of different student populations. By February 1st again, and then before the end of the year. And that really lines up nicely with our benchmark assessments. So that's really not new work. In addition, you will see a reconfirmation that will look like this. And we've already built it so that there's one set of tables for each month. So we really just need to say, yep, the plan that we put in place is still the right plan. If there are adjustments to make, we want to be able to do that. And we need to be able to document any public comments that we might have about the plan. And then in addition, we need to review the two-way interaction rates for each building and by each week. And we've chosen to separate that out between the students who are in-person and the students who are fully remote so that we can see any trends that we might need to address and make sure that we're on top of that in a timely manner so that we can make the right corrections to capture all of our students and their engagement in the learning that we have planned. So that's really what this does is just give us the opportunity to revisit this about once a month and make sure that we're on the right track. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about the plan itself. You had the chance to read it through in advance. So it's really just a compilation of the good work that we've been doing all summer as a team.
And just for clarification, I think we take action at the next meeting?
That is right, Heidi. Yep, absolutely. And by, we have to have our educational goals approved by tomorrow, actually. But we have to have the plan posted by October 1st. I can't imagine that our educational goals would change. We definitely want all students to improve from fall to winter and from winter to spring. That's a pretty all-inclusive goal.
Okay. All right, I'll open up to the board if you have any questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, no questions, just general comment. Thank you for all your hard work on that. It's a lot, I'm sure. But you did a great job, so thank you.
Yep, thanks, Matt. We tried to keep it short and sweet. We were pretty thorough in the last plan and we thought maybe not another 68 pages this time would be helpful for everyone.
Appreciate that. Okay. If we don't have any other questions, it's very clearly specified. We can move on in our agenda and we have next public comment. And Scott, I don't know if you've received any indicators of anyone that would like to address the board for their three for their three minutes, or if anyone in attendance would like to address the board, indicate so.
Yeah, I did not receive any requests. And if any of our attendees would like to, uh, communicate with the board, they can raise their hand and then I'll open up their mic. I'm not seeing any attendees indicate that they would like to share.
Okay. And as always, um, our emails are public and that we can always be contacted that way for any input or concerns. And so we will move on with the agenda, having no indicators. Okay. So we're at the action portion of our meeting. And our action item for tonight is our Neola Policy Updates. And I would entertain a motion for, as presented, for all three policies.
We're moved.
Support. Or second support.
All right, any discussion? Okay, having none, I'll call the roll. Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Yeah, I heard you. I, I could hear you. Uh, Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Revard?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
And President Reed, yes, policies are approved as presented. That brings us to communication. And for the Board of Education, we just have our upcoming meeting as stated below. There's no other activities. Obviously, there's no athletic passes or any of those types of things to hand out we would normally get at these meetings. We'll just see how all of that progresses. So that's all I have for the board communication.
Heidi, just a reminder for everybody, the Title IX training is out there. So I took mine today, but we got the links through email. You guys probably have seen it and I can't tell who has and who hasn't completed it. But it's due in 22 days. So just a friendly reminder, if you haven't gotten out there, um, let's get on top of that. Um, and actually, it was, it was a pretty good presentation. So Thrun did a nice job, pretty thorough, um, pretty comprehensive, so that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you for that.
I just wanted to mention that, uh, my husband, sorry Tracy.
Go ahead.
When my husband's not teaching in Kenowa Hills, he works at a vet clinic in Sparta. Uh, long story short, he works with a woman who has, um, children who are doing the online portion of, from Cedar Springs, and she is thrilled with the way that it is going. She loves the way we have, we have it set up. So thank you, Jen. Thank you, everybody who worked on that, because apparently it's going really, really well. So.
Thanks for saying that, Shannon. Bill Cataldo really is, um, the person that should get the thanks for that. He's been doing a great job with that programming and those teachers.
And Jeremy Verwise has been, uh, just a workhorse at the high school level as well.
Stacy, did you want?
I, I was just going to apologize for my technical difficulties. And I think I'm on here two times now, but I was afraid to try to leave, so. Sorry, sorry about that.
That's all right. We just will not give you two votes. That's, that's where that ends. Okay. All right. I think that's, yep, Scott.
I, I do have a couple of things, um, from, from my side on terms of communication. Again, just a reminder from John Norton. Um, because they're limiting the number of guests that can attend athletic events, um, they're, the, okay, will not be distributing passes, uh, for board members. And, um, so, you know, even though there are going to be events that we want to attend, unfortunately, unless we are connected directly to, uh, a student, uh, one of the participants, we'll not be able to, to attend those things. Um, I, I heard that the marching band is working on potentially, uh, engaging in a competition over in Hastings in mid-October, which is exciting for those, uh, for those students. And so we'll keep you posted on that. And then, uh, lastly, I just wanted to give you a quick update in terms of the most recent staffing change, uh, here in, uh, the District Office. Tonight is our first night without Pam Kozicki as being a part of one of the board meetings in many, many years. Uh, so Pam resigned her position, is, uh, moving forward and is going to do some other neat things in life. And so we're really excited and thankful for the work that she has done. But, uh, Matt and I are in the process of finalizing the language around, um, a posting uh, for, for that position. And so we'll be working hard to, uh, find someone who is, uh, in the area, who has a tremendous capacity around marketing and communication. Uh, and so we're really looking to beef up that component, uh, of our work. And so we'll keep, keep you posted. It's, it's realistically a six-week process. Uh, so as much as I want to push the fast-forward button on this work, uh, it's realistic to know that it's going to take us a couple of weeks to collect applicants, a couple of weeks to do the reflection and, and really, uh, screen the applicants to find the, the perfect fit for the team. And then it will likely give, you know, they'll need to give their current employer a couple of weeks' notice before they can join us. And so, uh, we've got it under control. And, uh, and we're, you know, you, you hate to lose people, uh, but it's always an opportunity to retool and rethink and get stronger as a team. And so we're excited about the market. Uh, we know that there are amazing people out there that want to bring their gifts and their talents to our team. And so we're excited to see where this next, uh, where this next step takes us.
Thank you for that. And it just hit me in prepping for this board meeting, the notices from Pam. So we do thank her for her work and she will be missed. So. All right. I think we're at the end of our agenda. And we, oh, we're not planning. Our work session next meeting is 6:15 September 28th. And we'll see what's going on with the governor's orders and within our own district, whether we stay Zoom, that has some benefits, um, and/or if, at what point that we do go back face-to-face. So, all right, with that, we'll stand adjourned and I believe it's 7:23.